2023 meeting of the Shrewsbury Select Board. I am Chairperson Beth Cassavant and we'll just take a moment for our board members to introduce themselves.
I'm Teresa Flynn.
Michelle Conlon.
Carlos Garcia.
John Samia.
My name is Justin Dobson.
Town manager Kevin Mizikar.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda tonight is to approve the bill's payrolls and warrants.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so voted. Second item is to approve the minutes of the July 25, 2023 meeting. Any comments on the minutes?
I was not present for that meeting, so I will abstain.
I am going to join you in abstaining as I was also not present for that meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so three ayes and two abstentions. Item number three is announcements and reports. I don't see any announcements. Am I missing anything, Justin?
No.
Okay, so we have no announcements this evening unless there's any board members with announcements. Okay, so we'll move on to the town manager's report.
Good evening, board members. A few items to update you on to start with. Wanted to inform you that we have been updated by the states and we now have 82 families at the emergency shelter in town, 270 total individuals, and 60 of them are school-aged children. Those numbers are as of about two weeks ago. So we'll be getting some updates tomorrow at our bi-weekly meeting and we'll provide updates to the board at that time. Excited to share that the police station building committee will be hosting a police station dedication on September 12 at 9 o'clock. That will be in front of the new station, so that will be the formal dedication ceremony. And then the police department will be hosting a public open house the evening of September 21, and that will include outside festivities. It'll incorporate the food truck event and be a good way to kick off the weekend that will be Spirit of Shrewsbury event. And then finally this evening, I wanted to inform the board that we've received a formal application from Spectrum Charter Communications, which is an app for an application for a cable franchise agreement to begin operations within the community. There is no exclusivity for cable franchise agreements, so many towns have more than one operator within the community. So this is a decision that the board would make as a licensee under federal communication rules to grant another franchise agreement or not. And it's a well-regulated area and very strict parameters in your decision-making, but I wanted to inform you that I received that application yesterday in the evening, and we will begin working both with council and other staff to get you this information and help you make that decision in the coming months. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Item number five is public comment pursuant to Select Board Policy 31 to offer citizens the opportunity to provide public comments during Select Board meetings on matters within the board's authority. It seems no one has signed up for public comment this evening, and I will just mention that Select Board member Garcia and I hosted office hours this evening, but no one came tonight. So I think people are just away enjoying the summer. So we, as a reminder, do host office hours the first Tuesday of every month from 5:30 to 6:30 here at Town Hall in Conference Room A, and we will be adding another date and time come the fall. So item number six is financial business and the fiscal year 2023 preliminary local receipts year-end review. So I believe Mr. Snowden is going to join us for that report.
All right. Good evening, board. David Snowden, Assistant Town Manager, Administration of Finance. So thank you. I look forward to providing a preliminary look at the fiscal year 2023 local receipts. So local receipts are locally generated revenues other than real and personal property. We have motor vehicle, excise, meals and hotel, investment income, departmental fees. All these together aggregate to our total local receipts at the end of the fiscal year. For FY '23, total local receipts amounted to $15,712,114, which was $2,282,76, or almost 17% greater than the fiscal year 2022 actuals. Additionally, the FY '23 actuals exceeded the budget revenues by $3,747,114, or 31% greater than budgeted. And over the past five years, we've seen a compounded annual growth rate of approximately 4.84% over all these years as well. Now, the single largest component of our annual local receipts at approximately 42% is derived from motor vehicles, and then the other categories all sort of combine, and they're roughly around 8% to 9% as we look at those different categories. Motor vehicles at the 42% is about $6.6 million. And another area that I would like to spend a little bit of time talking about is on the investment income, which is a little bit, it's higher than budgeted. We budgeted $675,000 and it came in at $2.783 million. And there's a couple nuances to that as well. A big part, we initially had a higher initial budget of about $900,000 when we were working on the revenue manual, and with the market conditions, we lowered that budget with concerns of what we would actually see in returns. However, the market turned to be more favorable, and then also there was a large influx of cash, especially through ARPA. So the combination of more cash coming in and a favorable market, and then us lowering the budget, those three things together made the actuals look, exaggerated the actuals more so than what we initially would have thought. And going forward, as we estimate with the revenue, especially in this area, the investment income, we're going to be working very closely with Bartholomew Mule and Company on how we should best manage these funds. In our operating fund, where we have the vast majority of the funds, we probably will be budgeting a little more conservatively. We're not going to be budgeting nearly at $2.7 million, but we'll be up from the $600,000, maybe closer to $1 million, and to help realize some more revenue for FY '25. And I think I'm more than happy to jump into detail in any one given area as would best suit the board.
Questions for Mr. Snowden? Mr. Samia?
Thank you. So investment income, I get, obviously treasury rates are higher than they were before, so our return is going to be higher, and we have the cash influx from ARPA to cover the two years of investments that will be, or the two installments. What else is driving that? So that's going to be the, so we have the $11 million, whatever the treasury rates are, that's going to shoot off a few hundred thousand dollars in interest income. What else is this? Is it, is this part of the operating accounts, or is this also embedded in enterprise funds and all of that? How does this work?
That's a great question. The funds represented here in the investment income are reflected of the returns found on the operating fund. So our OPEB fund and our various trust funds and the bond proceeds from the police station, the Beal project, those are all separate. We did transfer, what was it, $15 million from the Beal to the operating fund, $8 million from the bond proceeds for the South Coast project, and then another $30 million from the police station bond proceeds to the operating fund. All three of those transfers generated interest on their own, and then they were brought to the operating fund, which now has a balance of about $80 million. So all that together is what brought in a large increase in that fund. Does that sort of help explain it?
Yeah, it helps a lot, actually. And then, thank you. And then, when I look at the other accounts, so excise, we're pretty much spot on. We were worried about that a little bit. Hopefully, as vehicles become more available, we'll start to see that go up instead of an aged fleet. The other areas that, just other department revenue and licenses and permits. Let's start with licenses and permits. So we've had some pretty big projects. Do we need to have a pipeline of larger projects for that, those type of fees, or do we expect those to peter out over the next couple of fiscal years? I know it's trying to be a little bit crystal balling it, but is that really driven by larger projects we've had that are entering the latter stages?
My, I feel like for the past six years, we keep preparing ourselves that the projects are going to dwindle, and they have, but maybe not as fast as we thought they're going to. I do think that we'll see that go down, and it might be more similar to what we've seen in previous years, maybe before my time, which was around $700,000. But yes, it should calm down at some point. We just haven't really fully realized it yet.
I think one other factor to include in this when we think about the permit revenue is our permit fees are based on the value of work. So as construction costs have, you know, inflated significantly, you know, the permits fees are based on that value of construction. So, I mean, I agree with what Mr. Snowden said, that we continue, we've been very fortunate to always have at least one project, one larger project. I think we need to reconsider what our base is, and I think it's a little bit higher than what we expect it to be. Just the amount of property value, total assessed value in town, you know, over $7 billion, you know. The permit volume of, you know, over 1,000 building permits per year is, you know, driving the, a healthy level of recurring revenue from the permits.
Some of this could be attributable to the bylaw changes to have for Class A space, right? Warehouse space, logistical space, that will drive in projects here as, okay. One last question I have. So cannabis impact, that's pretty much, that's tough to spend, right? Even though it's year-over-year increase?
Right. Yeah, so, I mean, we've been dedicating our cannabis impact fees to drug prevention education within Shrewsbury Public Schools. The CCC's proposed regulations are very eye-opening, and I think they've more than overstepped their boundaries of what they should be allowed to do under the general laws, but they're still working through that. We are working to wean ourselves from those. We've never actually budgeted what we expected, and I think when we get to FY '25, we'll zero that number out. Because moving forward with host community agreements, that revenue won't be available to us.
Thank you. And last comment, as you look at the chart, the local receipts, when we were going through the midst of the pandemic, modeling it out, it's another model to look at because it's snapped back more quickly than the Great Recession and the dot-com bust, but it doesn't, so that's good in the sense, but areas that have grown weren't necessarily areas we would have thought of to begin with, particularly investment income. So, okay. Helpful, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I just had one regarding the ash landfill. How many more years do we have there to be able to count on that revenue?
Right now, where it's predicted, 2028, there are some other cells that are being looked at, but we're still currently under the operating timeframe of 2028.
May I ask you a question? Is that the revenue from the ash landfill, will that incrementally decrease, or is it just as expected at this point? Is it just going to end for FY 2028?
There are two components. There's the metals revenue, which we receive, and that's more of a steady $85,000. That will remain ongoing. It is a very profitable, or it is a very useful site for wind waste, and they want to keep it going as much as possible. I imagine as they're moving materials around from different areas, we may see it slowly taper off as opposed to all of a sudden it's done. But there will be a cliff at some point, just probably not the full amount.
Thank you. Just as a follow-up to that, that money is being directed toward OPEB right now.
Correct, yes.
Anybody else? All right. Well, thank you very much for the work on this and for the presentation. That brings us to item number seven, which is under Meetings and Hearings, a 7:05 PM public hearing with Almasa Group LLC, DBA IHOP 70 Boston Turnpike regarding their application for a common vitrual license. I'm going to invite you up to the table, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I know that you're here on behalf of the applicant, Najee Rostrum, so if you wouldn't mind just introducing yourselves for the board and for the public watching.
Yeah, my name is Hatem. I'm the vice president for the company.
I'm Brandon. I'm the GM, and I've been at the IHOP for 32 years.
Okay. So if you just want to take a minute to just explain to us, you know, why you're here, just obviously a common vitrual license, but any changes or things that we should know?
No major changes in the near future. We're keeping our operating hours as is. Maybe a few months down the road, we'll extend them till 10:00 PM or so. We're not going back to the 3:00 AM that we had years ago. It just wasn't profitable and didn't always bring in the best crowd.
So in the application, it does say 3:00 AM on Friday and Saturday. Is that still the intention?
No, that's the IHOP allowed hours from the franchise.
Okay.
We're looking to possibly 10:00 PM on weekdays and then weekends till 10:00 PM, possibly midnight.
Because I have to try to push all the locations to open 24/7 as much as they can, but like, we can't do this everywhere. Like, some location, like, you know, like, you have business overnight, some location, like, it's really dead. So depends. So like, they try to force everybody just to keep you open 24/7, you know. But like, I guess here, like, because we're from Maryland, so we just moved down here, we take a top-sparrow location on Shrewsbury like a few weeks ago. So he's more familiar with the area, with the crowds, so, but so far, like, you know, like, we are not planning just to extend it at midnight or 3:00 AM or ever. So we're going to keep it till 10 o'clock or maybe Friday and Saturday. If IHOP just keep just pushing us, we can just stay open till midnight.
So if it is the pleasure of the board to approve this application, we should keep the 3:00 AM, right, hours?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public wishing to be heard? Not seeing anyone.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve the application request for a common vitrular license for Almasa Group LLC, DBA IHOP.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Right, you're all set.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Item number eight is under New Business, and it's to review an act to assess and sign the estimated street betterment liens for Freiberg Avenue and Cutler Street. And this is because the town has frontage on those streets as well. So this is a continuation of the town's procedure to convert private ways to public ways. This was voted on at the annual town meeting in this past May, and the article was approved, and that authorized this board to acquire all the necessary interests in the ways to assess the betterments and get the streets accepted as public ways. So anything else you want to add? Any comments or questions from the board?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so voted. Item number nine is to review an authorized payment for the FY 2024 Massachusetts Municipal Association annual dues payments. So if we take a look at that, it'll show that our portion for our annual dues for a period of spanning from July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024 is $5,550. Any further discussion?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Item number 10 is to review an act on the amendments to Select Board Operational Policy Number One, role of board members. Just as a little bit of background, we have established working groups, and Select Board member Garcia and I are part of the policy working group. And so we thought we would start with Policy One. Many of the policies are outdated and don't really fit our current practice. Policy One was just really sparse. It didn't, it didn't really encompass the role of different board members, so primarily the chair, the vice chair, and the clerk. And so what we did was, we looked at a few examples from neighboring communities, and then we thought through sort of how our board operates historically and what our current practice is and what we might want the board to have in place as far as some guidelines and guidance around the roles of different board members, and we came up with this policy. Mr. Mizikar added some introductory material at the beginning, which, thank you for that, and then board members had an opportunity to review it for the past couple of weeks. So this is just an opportunity to talk through any other edits or changes, see where we land on this, and if people are comfortable, we can approve it tonight. If not, we can always come back with edits and changes. But it's a review and act just to give us the opportunity if we do decide that we want to move forward and vote on it. Take any comments or questions that people have?
Madam Chair, I had made some comments in the document, maybe more clarifying questions. I'm happy to go through those if it helps. I don't, maybe just starting at a high level, I don't feel like this introduces anything that's not currently in practice today. So maybe you and Carlos can comment on whether or not, as you were drafting this, you felt like you were implementing any change that we should be aware of, but it seems like it was more documenting the current practice of the board.
I don't, I mean, I would give you an opportunity if you'd like, or I can answer or whatever.
Fine, either way. I mean, I think that you're right, it's consistent with what the board has consistently done historically. So I think we just wanted to have that outlined, which I think is especially helpful as we are a younger new board. So as new members join and as we, I guess, ascend the ranks, just knowing what roles each of the officers have, and outlining that is a good thing for us to do. So I don't know if that answers your question, but.
Nothing groundbreaking, really. I mean, it's, it was interesting, I thought, to read what other communities have for their, for their policy and sort of say, oh yeah, this is something that we do. Yes, this is something that we do, and just sort of think through how to get it on paper.
Yeah, and I think, sorry, just to add to that, we didn't feel it was appropriate at this time to expand on any of the roles or add anything new that we haven't done before. Perhaps that's something we can explore in the future, but we just wanted to put this out there as a baseline.
Do you want to go through the comments one by one, or do you think it's best to handle?
Well, my first question was, we note that, and I think it's hard if the public is following along, that they don't have the benefit of seeing this document. So to your point, it's more just an introduction, and then more clarify is the roles of the chair, the vice chair, and the clerk. So my first question was, we indicate that each of these officers is chosen to serve a term of one year by vote. And I guess my first question was, that doesn't, does that prohibit someone from having consecutive years? I don't think it does, but is that something we need to explicitly state?
And? Do you want to just stop there and talk at, maybe take that one thing?
The lawyer's shaking his head no, so I feel.
Oh, I wasn't looking at him.
No, there's no term limit in it. It just says, it prescribes what happens annually without any limitation on the election or appointment. That's how I'd look at it. I think we're okay.
Having served as chair, I know at the end of the year, I'm happy to not be chair again. Like, I'm ready for a break. And that's just being honest. Like, I love the role. I think it's great, but at the end of the year, I feel like it's time for someone else to take over.
I will note, if I can, that my first two years here, John LeBeau was back-to-back chair.
Right.
So just, it has happened recently.
Yeah. But I also think that was a consistency thing because it was your first. And then I know I was thinking through the same thing, and I do know of other instances, like on like school committee, where a chair stayed on, and again, it was like, it was COVID, and so it was consistency. I mean, I think we could write it in, but I think historically we don't really see people keep it for more than a year. It gets rotated, which I think is actually a really good thing to do. I think if it became a problem, it's something that a future board could always visit and maybe want to change the policy.
My second question was, the role of the chair is to prepare the agenda, and my question was, if a board member disagrees with an agenda item, does the chair, can the chair override that? So I think it's been, you know, the practice, but there have, I've had a personal situation where I wasn't ready for something to be brought forward in a meeting, and the chair basically said, it's going on the agenda. So I'd like to have a discussion about sort of what that process looks like. And, you know, if we're going to have a policy, and again, there are new members that sort of point to this, this is here, and the chair could say, well, it's in the policy, I prepare the agenda. So I don't know if anyone else has comments or? And to that extent, there are a few items that say, unless otherwise determined by the board. So trying to understand what the context of that is, like, what does that mean unless otherwise determined?
So I guess I'll start with the prepare the agenda. I mean, I can only speak to like what my experience has been and just currently in the role, how I approach it. So in my past experience, there have been times where an item has gone on an agenda, and I may not have thought that I was ready or we were ready as a community for that item to be on the agenda, and I might have had a conversation with whoever was chairperson at the time. In some instances, it's the majority of board members are ready, and so I kind of have to get there. And then for me personally, I would always want to take into account what I'm hearing from other board members if there is some serious concern with an item on an agenda. The other thing that I've seen happen in the past, too, is like, if we're all sitting around and there's something on the agenda, it's not unusual and heard of for a board member to say, you know, I really didn't have the time I needed to really thoroughly examine this issue. Is it okay with everyone if we put it off until the next meeting? So I've seen that situation happen as well. I guess I don't think of this as like an iron fist, kind of like, the chair says, and so that's the way it is. Like, I always think that a board should be collaborative and should take into account what, a chair should take into account what they're hearing from other board members in setting an agenda. I mean, for the most part, an agenda is going to be very straightforward, and a lot of what's on an agenda comes from the manager's office also. But there are, I hear what you're saying, instances where there are agenda items that do require more thought and preparation, and how do we make sure that we balance it? there are agenda items that do require more thought and preparation, and how do we make sure that we balance it?
Can I add something?
You sure can.
So the only other thing that comes to my mind when considering how you may want to orchestrate this would be the issue that you would have with serial communications in developing an agenda and not violating the open meeting law. Right? Like, I think that the Chair should be afforded the authority because serially, you can't have the meeting and get a yes/no from each member before you go forward. That could be orchestrated through myself. But, you know, as something gets finalized, I think to conduct the business of the board, because it can only be done in the open session, it probably makes the most sense to keep it. Keep it as clear as possible in the policy with an understanding that the Chair will do their best to understand where all board members are. And my other comment, just further experience, you know, I've always seen it work the best when who's ever sitting in the Chair is always more than willing to add an agenda item at the request of all members, right? Like, there should be less of a deliberative process for that because each board member holds equal standing in the community, and if they think there's something that needs to be addressed in public, then let's get that on the agenda and then allow the board to have a conversation in public.
And that is our practice, is to make sure that we work through you or your office on things of that nature, because I think most people probably know that we meet with the manager weekly, you know, one-on-one or in two people and the manager. And that's a really important mechanism for communicating and making sure that all board members have information and are aware of what the upcoming agenda items are likely to be, especially if it's something that's not routine, like a meeting or a hearing for license application or something like that.
I think we've had circumstances too where we've had something on our agenda to review and act on something, and, you know, through the discussion in the meeting, it becomes clear that we're not ready to act on it, and it gets delayed and to, for, you know, gets pushed to a future meeting, so that may be, you know, and that's important work, that we usually, you know, usually there's important things that come out of that conversation that then, you know, pushes it to a future meeting, so. I think in most circumstances, it makes sense for this to remain as written.
So I can think of one example, Trails Committee, charge came here, and then I had a lot of comments to it, and we punted, gave an opportunity to provide comments. I think historically, when I was Chair, eighty, ninety percent's going to flow from either it's blocking and tackling largely, as you said, through the Town Manager. We'll get others, I think, going forward through really the working groups, so that's another opportunity, I think, as things come up on the agenda going forward, but through the Chair and the Town Manager. So largely, it worked exactly the way that you had talked about, and I think going forward, it's just through communication and agenda items, and if there's something that we're not comfortable with when it's presented, there's no problem kicking it up. But at least it puts a process in place.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I think that I don't disagree with what everyone is saying. I think it's worthy of the discussion because I do think that you don't know in the future who's going to be in that role, and I think that level of clarity can be helpful. I think that, you know, there could be different philosophical opinions around does the Chair, or do we create rank, or do we create hierarchy when we have these officers? To me, you're right, in order to effectively and efficiently conduct business, we appoint someone to really help lead us through the business at hand. And ninety-nine percent of the time, it's perfectly fine. But there are those times when, you know, we are a board of equal members. And I think that you're not going to capture within a policy how to effectively communicate, how to ensure that there's equity in communication. I mean, I'll take this agenda item just as an example. Town Manager's Office reached out, here's the draft policy, we'd like your comments. We'd like to address it in a meeting in August, and three days later, it's on the agenda. And it's like, okay, you know, it would be great to say, we're going to review it at this meeting, and you need to have your comments by this time. And that way, you know, we're all kind of on the same page and can have, you know, conversations with whatever stakeholder we need to. Again, not thinking you can exactly capture that in a policy, but I think that hopefully, the level of collaboration that this board has historically had and currently has, it will continue in practice. My only other comment, material comment, was regarding the Chair making liaison assignments and assigning responsibilities for special projects and tasks. And that is an area where I do feel like that is sometimes done in a silo. I don't think that there's equal opportunity. I would like to see if the Chair has the authority to make those assignments and assign those responsibilities, that the board is equally given the opportunity when it's practical. I mean, there are situations where something is maybe urgent and, you know, you need to take action. But you know, whether or not we maybe just add that, you know, to the policy in collaboration with board members or along those lines, I do think that that will be helpful moving forward.
Thoughts, comments?
Thought. So, policy generally is fine for me. But what I do ask is that the, if I look at the fifth bullet, in accordance with board policies, respond to email and written communication directed to the full board, request that that be the next policy. I think that the policy in place now predates social media, like emails. It really is like the nineteen nineties call, they want their policy back. I think that's one area, so to bring it up to date, but I also think in terms of there are so many other opportunities to communicate, where is it as individual members having an interaction with a resident versus we're getting into policy discussions and that should be siloed however we want to communicate that? So I think it goes far beyond the policy. The policy today is, we get a correspondence correspondence addressed to the board, read it into correspondence, and then the Chair responds. That's a, can be at times, depending on the issue, a fraction. But it becomes form over substance, five of us could get the exact same email, but separately. But does that follow then? Okay, we all respond. I mean, to me, it's one and the same. I don't know every rabbit hole we can go down, but I think in the era of so many modes of communication at this point, to try to figure out what our process is going forward with that. So we have, if we have a decision as a board, it's not somehow communicated alternatively. I don't have examples, but what I do have is it's a lot of holes in it. And to try to get us all on the same page, it's not, I think it's a really good thing because again, you mentioned rules of the road, is the board is relatively young to say, okay, with all of these modes out there, particularly as we're trying, we have communication enhancements, what does that mean for the board? And even delineating between, okay, if we get something, when do we hand that over to the town and then we're no longer the conduit? Like, all of those sort of communication avenues, I think, would be great, how it would tie into that particular bullet. So I know there are a lot of policies, some probably easy to put away, but if you could. It'd be interesting, that conversation will be interesting.
Select Board Member Garcia and I found ourselves with an hour this evening, and so we started looking through policies because we're both on that working group, and it's Policy Fifteen, and it hasn't been updated since 2016. And it doesn't reflect what we currently do. So it's definitely a policy in need of some help. So that's the next one that we're going to tackle and hopefully be able to bring something back to the board within the next few weeks to make sure that we can get something put together, because it really is, it's an important one.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, and just if I may, one more thing, that it also will help us talk through what's a public record. Right? No, no problem with it, but what is it, what does it mean? How do we save it? What are the requirements we should consider as part of that? Because it's, we have our government email, but if we post something, are we comfortable that, no, it's just, we're just talking, you know? Things like that, I think, can be addressed in that, and it'll be very instructive and informative, particularly as the board continues forward.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments? So just to kind of, just to comment on making liaison assignments, I think that having the working groups is going to help with that. Because in my mind, that's sort of what that means, right? We have now assigned ourselves responsibility for special projects in certain areas, depending on what comes up and who has sort of expressed an interest in what area. So I think that will help also provide some equity around board members being able to take on different tasks. And then coordinate the representation of the board at meetings, conferences, and other events and gatherings unless otherwise determined by the board. To me, I think that means that we get help from Justin in coordinating our calendar so that we know who's going to be where. For example, with office hours, who's going to be there? Rather than the Chairperson calling each member to say, are you going to be at office hours to make sure that we don't have any more than two? Trying to figure that out, you know, it also prevents any sort of serial communications if we are going through the manager's office. Anything else on this policy? It's not perfect, but it is better than what we had. We could try to live with it for a bit and see what we think of it. It's always very easy to add or update a policy, or we can hold it until the next meeting, just whatever people are comfortable with.
Thank you for the work that you both did on this. It's, you know, the first thing you do when you're a newly elected member of the board is you elect the Chair, Vice Chair, and Clerk, and until now, there was nothing written about what the roles and responsibilities are, so you know, I had watched many, many, many meetings, you kind of figure things out over time, but it's nice to see, sort of see it written down, so.
I mean, I'm fine with the recommendation to move forward with it. I think that you know, I guess my last comment or question is should some of these Chair responsibilities be shared with other officers? But you know what, I think I think like a lot of policies that we draft, we monitor it and adjust if needed going forward. So I don't feel strongly enough to hold it up, so I'm willing to make a motion to approve policy. We're just doing this as an amended Policy One.
Yes.
Amended Policy One, Officers of the Board, as it's currently written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so voted. Item number eleven is to review and act on the address change request from 566 to 572 Main Street to 566 Main Street pursuant to Select Board Operational Policy Number Twenty-Nine. And just reading through this, I think we're trying to move away from this series of address numbers to a single address. Pretty straightforward.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number twelve is to review and discuss the land acknowledgement statement. So this was an item of correspondence at the meeting at the end of July. Just as a little bit of background, Mr. Mizakar had received an inquiry from the Chair of the Library Board of Trustees about a land acknowledgement statement for the library. And at the time, the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee was just about to be formed, and so the library was like, is this something that we would like to adopt townwide? And Mr. Mizakar saw it as an opportunity to have this go before the DEIB Committee, so they did take this under advisement before the DEIB Committee's meetings were being recorded and televised. They did have a joint meeting with the Library Director, Priya Ratham, and Deb LeBeau, who's the Chair of the Library Trustees, and several of the Library Trustees attended as well, and there was a robust conversation around the land acknowledgement statement and what that would entail. And then the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee talked about it amongst themselves, reached out to the Nipmunk organization, which is in Grafton, and came up with their own recommendation, which is part of the letter that you see before you. And so that was just so that people at home or even this board, that you're up to speed on where this came from. So it is just a review and discuss. There's no intention to vote on this this evening, but just an opportunity to sort of talk through it as board members. Comments or thoughts?
I think this is great. I think it's a nice, you know, it's a a nice acknowledgement. I would love to see, you know, maybe in partnership with the DEIB Committee, like more, you know, I know like in Grafton, they have an annual powwow, and they have all these different events and activities and communications with the community that maybe we could start sharing within Shrewsbury as well. Hosting events or things like that, but I think overall, this is a, it's a nice statement, it's a nice acknowledgement. I think it's important that we do it. So grateful to the people that worked on this.
Mr. Samia.
So if the library wants to do it, no issue? If if the suggestion is to come in from another's board, there'd be a lot more research that I'd want to do? To be honest, I'd love to hear directly from the Nipmunk Tribal Nation. I'd also like to understand, words are great, what are the outcomes? What are the meaningful outcomes? Having a statement that we can read, fantastic. But how does it improve anything? So that'd be a question that I'd have. So from our standpoint as a board, I think there's a lot of research that I'd need to do. That, but the Library Board of Trustees is an elected body. If that's something that they want to do, that's something that's within their purview.
I would agree on additional research. I would also like more community input or awareness of this. You know, I had a resident reach out to me when they heard the Library Trustees proposing this, and so I went back to the DEIB meetings and the library meetings, trying to sort of unpack the origin of this, and it was really difficult to find. And, you know, I think at a very basic level, is it the right thing to do? Yes, but intention is really important. Why are we doing it? What are we looking to accomplish? I did some research on what other towns are doing, universities are doing, and there were other statements that I felt were just so much more aligned with, I think, what some residents might consider. I don't want to say appropriate, but preferred for Shrewsbury, so I would like to see a little bit more engagement and input and really to better understand what it is that we intend with this. You know, in researching sort of from Native American organizations, you know, that's the first thing that they say, why are you doing this? And if you're doing it because everyone else is doing it, you know, you need to stop right there, and so. And language is important, and they do recommend that you don't sugarcoat the past. But I do think that we've seen that an approach to this with really great intentions can create a lot of, you know, division within the community, and I think that that's what we want to avoid, so. Maybe we can think of ways where we can, you know, get additional input, and I agree with you, that hearing from Indigenous peoples in our, in our community would be important as well.
Yeah, I certainly agree with all the comments that have been said. Because I do want to make sure that whatever we do after adopting this, if we adopt it, is meaningful and not just performative. I certainly appreciate the work of the DEIB and the Library Board of Trustees for their input and their work on this, but I think, like my colleagues have said, just want to understand more about what the Nipmunk people themselves find meaningful and what we can do to help support and help improve on this. You know, I know that they sometimes host events in the community and in the, I guess, tribal lands, and I know that the library has supported that, so just as has been said, just wanted to know more about what is it that is actually meaningful? I think reading a statement is is fine and good, but over time, it just kind of loses its meaning, so. So, um, I think that this is something that we should really care for and really, um, be thoughtful about before we just kind of incorporate it into our daily meetings or, you know, routine.
Yeah. I mean, I, I know there are some bullets in here of suggested ways to engage if a statement were implemented. And I definitely see, um, for example, highlight Nipmunk and other Indigenous art in temporary and permanent public spaces, or put information on the Nipmunk people at trailheads and parks within the communities. Like, I can see connections to the newly formed Trails Committee when that's up and running, or the Cultural Council, um, who I know does a lot with art in public spaces. I think there are ways to make connections. But again, I worry about making a statement that isn't, that we're doing it because other people are doing it and not because there's going to be some sort of power behind it, and that it's not going to be meaningful for the Nipmunk Tribe per se, and we're just going to be doing something for the sake of doing it. And I do sit in on the DEIB Committee meetings, and I will say that that, my statement is consistent with, with the conversation that the DEIB Committee had, making sure that if something is done townwide, it's the right something for, you know, the right reasons, not just because everyone else is doing it. So, I'm not sure how we get there. Um, I think a conversation with someone from the Nipmunk Nation, which I know has an organization in Grafton, might be the best next step. So, I, what I did hear from Mr. Samia, and I do agree with it, um, is to give the library the okay to move ahead on their own, as if they are an elected, the Trustees are an elected policymaking Board. And so, I, I would hesitate to continue to hold them up, if this is something that they would like to do.
Just for the library.
Does that require us?
It doesn't, no. But they were kind of out of respect waiting. So, we just want to communicate our decision and make sure that they know that.
I agree.
Move forward. All right.
So, can I ask, what is our, what is there, there is no ask of us right now as a Board? So, we're just sort of reviewing it and commenting, but no, we don't need to take action, is that?
Not this evening, no, we're not taking action this evening.
Okay.
It's just an opportunity to just, to discuss.
Okay.
Also, because the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee does meet next Monday, I just wanted to make sure that we did have the conversation, in case it was something that they wanted to follow up with on their agenda.
Okay. All right. As far as the recommendations in the letter, um, is that, like, can, you know, can we, can we make sure we continue these conversations? That this isn't, you know, that, that this is something that's discussed again at some point, maybe for action? Um, and, you know, potentially responding to some of the requests in the letter, um, you know, how do we?
Well, one of the recommendations is continued conversation with the Nipmunk people. It seems like you are interested in continuing conversations. I would be comfortable, you know, asking if you would want to reach out on behalf of our Board.
Yeah, absolutely.
If other Board members are comfortable with that, to try to find a way for us to have the opportunity to connect with someone.
Okay. Has this, was this worked on, like, in collaboration with the Nipmunk Nation?
So, the DEIB Committee did reach out to the Nipmunk Nation, yes.
Okay.
Um, and then two members of that committee worked on this letter that was then brought forward to the full committee at one of their meetings, I don't remember which one. And they voted on it to send to our Board.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I think I just want to make sure that folks at home know that we're not, it's not that we're trying to stop this or not do it. I think we just want to do it in the right way, so, um, appreciate, um, Select Board Member Conlon's efforts in making sure that we're communicating with them.
Thank you. Maybe we can find a way to have a representative from the Nipmunk Tribe come to one of our workshops or a meeting, or just some way to have a, a discussion with the whole Board.
Sure.
Be great. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so we'll make sure to bring that back at some point, once we've done a little bit more work on it ourselves. So, item number thirteen is to review and act on the one-day beer and wine license application from Maria Rodriguez, El Sombrero Taqueria, nine Trowbridge Lane, for the Shrewsbury Summer Festival at the Scandinavian Athletic Club, four thirty-eight Lake Street, on August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, from three o'clock PM to seven o'clock PM. Move approval? Yes, go ahead.
So, we did get the updated certificate of insurance that's in here? The note on this.
So, we have an updated COI with the Town listed as an additional insured, but we do not have the liquor liability policy currently. The insurer has informed the applicant that they require some sort of either documentation of the license being approved before they can give a quote on the policy. So, the ask is to do a conditional approval.
They would need the license number.
Okay.
To issue a liability insurance.
So, we approve it conditional upon, and then you're able to give her the number?
Yep, I can work with her.
Okay.
We have one second.
Does that make sense? I don't think that you made the motion yet, because it's the conditional.
No, conditional on an updated, is it still an updated certificate of insurance?
Correct.
So?
Including liquor liability, right, specifically? Okay. Second.
No, yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right.
May I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
Is this, um, like a catering business, or is it a food truck? Is there a brick and mortar restaurant? Oh, okay. Okay, I was curious, because I saw the Shrewsbury address, it's a residential neighborhood, so I was curious about that. Okay, yeah, that's great. I'm sad I can't make the event, and it's always when I'm on vacation every year. So, thank you.
Spirit of Shrewsbury?
Spirit of Shrewsbury?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I'll be there for that one, so, I'll make sure to stop in. Thanks. Yeah, that's great, sounds fantastic.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That brings us to correspondence. On the first item of correspondence is an email dated August first, two thousand twenty-three from Shayna Parker, a member of Tipping Point zero-one-five-four-five, regarding Tipping Point zero-one-five-four-five notes on municipal CARP documents. Um, item number fifteen is an email dated July thirtieth, thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three from Kelly Pendergrass, Goddard Consulting LLC, regarding environmental notification form for seven oh-one Boston Turnpike, Shrewsbury, Patrick Subaru. Item number sixteen is an email dated August first, two thousand twenty-three from Mitesh Shah regarding the Tobin Hill Neighborhood Letter, Tobin Hill Bridge. Um, item number seventeen is an email dated August third, two thousand twenty-three from Morgan Simko, Chief of Staff, Office of State Senator Michael O'More, regarding H three-nine-oh-six, an act authorizing the Town of Shrewsbury to grant abatement of real estate taxes for the daughter of firefighter, fallen firefighter Christopher Roy. That's not quite been signed yet, right? We're still waiting. Um, and then the last few are all ZBA decisions. So, item number eighteen is a ZBA decision for July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three for Lake Twenty LLC for a variance for property located at three sixty Hartford Turnpike. Item number nineteen is a ZBA decision of July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three for Patrick Collins, Shrewsbury Public Schools, for a variance for a property located at five fifty-seven Main Street. Item number twenty is a ZBA decision of July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three for Dean Sokas for a variance for a property located at fifty Brook Street. Item twenty-one is a ZBA decision of July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three for Castle Development LLC for a special permit for a property located at five Old Barn Road. Item twenty-two is a ZBA decision of July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three for Duncan McRae for variances for property located seventeen Marion Avenue. And item twenty-three is a ZBA decision of July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three for Carlin Grenier for a variance for a property located at forty-five Roman Drive. Is there anything else to come before the Board in open session? A motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.